I'm calling to order the April 14, 2025, meeting of the Auburn Select Board. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Select Board is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, dial 408-650-3123 with access code 235235861, or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials have been provided to members of this body, are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone else in the audience also recording? Seeing none, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance if you are able.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To start, we had a longtime Town Meeting member, a moderator and assistant moderator, Chet Stensel, passed away recently, and I would like a moment of silence to honor Chet. We do have people signed up for public comment. We do have a very full agenda tonight, and the bylaw is for three minutes, so I will start with Mr. Lozong.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is John Lozong. I'm a resident of Auburn. I just want to discuss briefly some pollution that's going on down at the bottom of Main Street, and some transparency and accountability in my local government. I spoke with a government official, well, an Auburn Town official, a couple weeks ago, and they assured me that Main Street Auburn would be getting paved. They assured me it would be done this year. They told me they could even get me a date, but then they couldn't, and they would get back to me. And then they showed up, and I spoke with another Town employee from the DPW, and they said they wouldn't be able to do any paving down on Main Street because at the top of the street, they're going to be put in veterans housing. And I was very happy to hear that. I'm a veteran myself, veterans housing, I love that stuff. And fortunately, within the past hour, I got to speak with a couple people, you know, residents at the top of the hill that I know, and they told me that the developer has bought that house, it bought the hair salon, he bought the house behind the gas station, the house to the right of the gas station, he's trying to work his way all the way down Main Street. And he told both them people that it's low-income housing, veterans housing. You know, there's two different stories here, so it's either veterans housing or it's low-income housing. I have no problem with low-income housing, I have a problem with the crime that it brings, you know. I don't believe they can build anything at the bottom of 5 Main Street because the pollution has been going there strong since 1835 until 1974. So that place is saturated with who-knows-what, die, all sorts of stuff down there, so it's time to take a look at that. I think the biggest problem we get going in Auburn right now is the pollution down there. That's what I think. Maybe, I don't know, people disagree with me or not. Accountability and transparency in the local government. I'm bringing this up because I want answers. I want answers because I'm a taxpayer, and I've said it before, on Friday, something happens to me, I get paid, and it got nothing to do with any of your people up here. When you people get paid, there's everything to do with me and all our other residents around here, including yourselves, if you do indeed live in Auburn. And I have a question just for one selectman. Dan Carpenter, how did you obtain my wife's phone number? Yes, I had to speak to a Town Employee, and my wife told me that Dan Carpenter gave her number to the Town Employee to call me. It's not a bad, it's not a big deal, so I'm not mad, I'm just wondering how you got a phone number.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Oh, okay. My wife told me to call one of the Town Employees here, and she said they got their phone, she got their phone number from Dan Carpenter, that's all. I was just wondering how you got a phone number. Somebody got a phone number, I don't know, big mystery, I guess. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Teri Moriarty.
My name is Teri Moriarty, and I live at 15 Packard Dog Village. Wayne Page was on the Auburn Housing Board for 10 years. He lost his position through a Town Vote, although he is convinced I made him lose that position. At the last, the last time we had a vote, just before the vote, there was a debate. There were supposed to be three members debating, but only two showed up, and Wayne talked about how he realized how gruff he used to be, and that he was going to, he had gone through his lifestyle, and he was going to change his ways. Well, he has not. I went to a housing meeting April 1st, at which time he slandered me, just, he was totally ridiculous, obnoxious, had no business talking to me the way he did, called me a constant liar. And after being on several boards in my lifetime, he should have, even if he thought I was a liar, which I was not, he should have said, "I will look into these issues and get back to you." But he didn't. He just attacked, attacked, and attacked. And then he turned on Wendy Hilbert, Wendy, and wagged his finger at her and yelled, "You shut up." It's not the way any chairman should act, it's not the way any board member should act towards another board member or somebody that's in the room trying to get transparency and questions asked and answered. I went to the, oh, that was that one. Mr. Page knows better than most how inappropriate Auburn Housing is. He knows that there's background politics, favoritism, discrimination. Laurie refuses to talk to tenants, and now if tenants can't go to the board meetings and face somebody decent as chairman, there's nobody that we can go talk to about the issues that are going on up there, and believe me, there are many. I'm really tired of having to live like this. We can't, we just have no one to talk to. There's nobody. We had a tenant that said to one of the maintenance men, "Don't you think it's time to change that flag?" And he told her she needs to file a work order. I put it on my paper for the April 1st meeting. This is the flag that was hanging up at Auburn Housing, a disgusting display. They finally did, after I put that on the paper, change the flag, but the tenant should not have to bring this up. There's an apartment there that has been rented, got rented in December. Nobody lives there. There's just nobody living there, and somebody in that hallway asked, "Where are the people? Where are the tenants?" And she was told, "We don't care, as long as we get our money, we don't care." The attitude, the deception is ridiculous, and I'm wondering how, is it possible to get Mr. Page off the board because he's very obnoxious and truly is unfit to be on the board, never mind be a chairman? I don't know if there's anything that you people can do, but I'm hoping to get some answers for all the issues that are going on up there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. And finally, we have Mr. Dan Largess.
Dan Largess, I'd like to reserve my comments for later in the meeting when certain things come up. I did not see a sign-up sheet for after the meeting, so that's why I signed, well, that was before the meeting, I thought.
Sorry.
Okay, well, I'd like to reserve my comments until later in the meeting. Thank you.
Certainly. So we have a no community organizations. We do have a presentation from our auditors' fiscal year '24 report by our audit manager, Tom Scanlon and Jeff Sedron. Okay. If you'd like to come up.
Okay. So then I don't feel bad, exactly.
Probably should have told you that before. Yeah, I'm gonna walk.
That was difficult. Push it down. Push it down, I thought you did. Oh, okay.
No. How's everyone doing?
Good, thank you.
Great day out there today. For those who don't know me, I'm Tom Scanlon, the managing partner at Scanlon Associates. I've been the partner on the Town of Auburn's Audit for the past 12 years. So tonight, I was gonna kind of walk you through your financial statements, kind of go through what we do at our level. Any questions, please ask. So you should have a thicker report, the financial statements. On pages 3, 4, and 5, that is the audit opinion. It's the best opinion you can get, it's an unmodified opinion. That's all, bonding companies are gonna be looking at that, granting agencies will look at that. So it's just general about the audit. We gave no adjustments to the financial statements, we had no disagreements with management, we had no difficulties. Went pretty smooth, as an audit can go. So turn to page 20. So what we're doing is a financial statement audit, it's, you know, it's not a forensic audit, it's not a DoJ audit, it's very popular right now. So as we look at, this is your balance sheet on page 20, and as we look and we define risk on your financial statements, that's what we want to, free material misstatement. As you look on the asset side, your two top assets are cash and investments and receivables. So we assess risk, we're looking at those, making sure there's controls over cash, you're reconciling on a periodic basis. When expenditures leave the bank, they are on a warrant that's being signed off on as a department has an expense, turns it in to be paid. Town accountant has controls in place that, is it timely, is it going to the right account? And that's put on a warrant. The warrant goes out for signatures, then it goes to the treasurer for the check registered, the checks equal the bottom line, and then they go out. Those are all controls in place and signatures. And the bank statements are being balanced. So as, our firm puts a big emphasis on cash reconciliations, because cash is so pervasive throughout your financial statements. So we're looking at the June 30th reconciliations at the bank statement level, we're looking at outstanding checks, we're looking at DITs, we're looking for outliers and reconciling items. For instance, if a DIT has been on your bank statement recon for four months, we're gonna look at that. If there's a large number of outstanding checks that aren't clearing in July and August. So you do have cash reconciliation procedures in place. I think you had a small variance at the end of June of like $600, if I'm not mistaken, that had to do with a void check. Again, that's happening on a monthly basis. Same thing on your receivables. As you can see, property tax receivables, you have $658,000 outstanding. Again, when you vote a budget, it goes through the tax recap process, gets certified. That is the development of your real estate bills. Your real estate bills are then mailed out to the residents, and they're coming and paying them. And as they walk in the door, again, controls are taking place, it goes into the collector's office, which is independent from the accounting. So when someone pays a bill, it's logged into the system, you have software that tracks the subsidiary ledgers. That list is on a periodic basis reconciled to the general ledger, and you have no variances between that detail and the general ledger. Again, as we look from audit standpoint, we will look at that. If there is variances, that will cause us to go one step down, we should look at this a little bit further. So you can see, so we're spending a lot of time in the collector's and treasurer's office, really looking at the detail. And then the second kind of risk on your financial statements is you have, you're broken out into different opinion units, you have the general fund, which is your main operating budget, and then you have major funds, which is your ARPA funds, which, again, that meets the definition of a major fund. Then you have your non-major governmental funds, which is your grant funds, your capital projects, your trust funds. So as we look at it on page 21, is the change of how that comes about, the different funds. So as you look, what we don't want to see in the general fund, we don't want to see, like, if you are going up for a capital project and you're borrowing, we don't want to see the debts being reported to the general fund. Again, grant funds, if you get a grant to do public works, we don't want to see it in the general fund, we want to see it in a grant fund. So we do a lot of substantive analytical, and what that means is we're looking for outliers. So again, when we look at your special revenue funds, we're looking for deficit accounts or large surpluses, so we're comparing, is this where we're gonna project, for instance, Chapter 90. Chapter 90 is a reimbursable type grant, you spend the money, and then you submit for reimbursement, so we expect that to be in deficit at any given time. So we put a lot of emphasis on that, we consider that a high-risk grant and a reimburse. So as we look on page 21, your revenue side, you can see on the general fund, your property tax is your largest revenue source, assists in the general fund. Again, we're doing testing on that analytical, and we're also balancing out the receivable. And then you see intergovernmental, 17.5 million. We're getting reports from the state of what they gave you for revenue, and we're tracing that into your financial statements. So we're testing the intergovernmental piece, and then excise, which, again, motivator excise, and that's also room occupancy tax and meals tax. And again, we're getting a report from the state on those two categories, too, to say, this is what they gave you, they want to see how it flows through your general ledger. So you can see, on the revenue side, we're testing 70% of your revenue, again, it's done on analytical basis, and also testing the subledgers in the collector's office. So as we go down, again, how your risk on your financial statement goes, we don't want to see things in the wrong bucket. And again, you have controls in the accountant's office. As a receipt comes in, it's being, a grant comes in, it's being signed to an account number, and it's going out to special revenue funds. That's what we want to see. So as we look at your financials, your risk is making sure everything gets to the right bucket. If you have a capital project that is, you go to Town Meeting authorized $10 million for a borrowing, we want to see that borrowing go to a capital projects fund, and those expenditures set up to the appropriate subledgers in the capital projects, like we're doing with, like a roadway. We want to see the $10 million be in the roadway, and the expenses go in there. And it'd be a confor all in Karen's GL, what you have. And again, as an expenditure goes to the system, if we want to see it in posted to account, there's an actual invoice backing that up. So you can go into Karen's ledger to any account, and there's an invoice backing it out, all the signs off. Roughly, we test between 80 and 100 invoices between all, 40 at random, and then we go into specifically grants accounts, the school, Chapter 90 is another one. So that's kind of what we do. So as we look at your financial statements here, a couple things jump out at us and everyone else that's looking at them. Is, under the general fund, you see unassigned 25, 25 million? That is, should be your stabilization, your free cash numbers, and that is very healthy. So a benchmark is, they look at that number and compare it to your budget. Your budget is roughly about $78 million. So the unassigned fund balance is roughly about 30% of the budget. A good marker is 10%, and then when you get to 15. So your reserves policies, and I know I say year after year, are working. And I would kind of encourage to keep going with that, but you're very healthy when it comes to reserves. And then, if you talk about reserves on page 24, this is your budget versus actual, it's probably, that's governance, the governing board, that's probably the most important financial statement, I think. Looks at your budget that was voted on the revenue side and expenditure side, and it kind of compares, tells you where your free cash is coming from, how you're budgeting. And as we look at the revenue side, you had a revenue budget of about 72.4 million, and you took in 75 million. The two biggest overestimation of the revenues was on excise and other taxes, which is your motivator excise and your room occupancy. Again, you should be very conservative in that regard because they're market-based, and you're roughly about $1 million on that. And then on investment income, you'll see about 1.1 million over. We've been seeing that across all our clients this year. I think that's a one-time outlier. I don't know if the economy's gonna be, it kind of stunned us when we was doing the first couple audits this year, it's like, oh, all this investment income coming way over budgeted. Again, I would encourage to be conservative on that, but that's how you're generating free cash. And then on the expenditure side, you have about 1.1 million in turnbacks appropriations. So as we look at analytical, so you see under transfers in and transfers out, those are your budgeted transfers, like if you vote $2 million to the stabilization fund, or take a million dollars out of the stabilization fund. One of the audit procedures we do, we take your final budget, and we tie that, we take your Town Meetings that you authorized, we tie that into the tax recap sheet to make sure you sent out the proper amounts of bills. Then we also tie that into the Town Accountant's subsidiary ledger, where it says total budget. That's one of the audit steps that we do. And so when you look at transfers in and transfers out analytics, if you have your budget of transfers, and there is a variance, we will go look at that, say, there shouldn't be a variance transfer, why a transfer didn't happen. You can see there's an $18,000 surplus there. That's a closeout of old grants. So again, you have controls in place, very sound. You know, one of the other things we look at is trust funds. We will look at your stabilization account, and we will tie it out to the bank statements and making sure, back to the Town Meetings, because we consider stabilization fund a high-risk area, just because you get a lot of eyes on it, and it's part of your reserves as we look at your balance sheet. And that's kind of what we do. I don't know if you have any specific questions.
Sure, thank you. Do board members have any questions?
So we've had a change in Town Managers, going back to when Jacobson left, and now Ace left, and when they're in the process of searching for a new Town Manager. So what impact does that have, if any, on our bond ratings? Funding agencies look at that.
Yes, they do. They look at management, if there's a change at it, that's one factor. Your reserve, I mean, your reserves are the driver of every bond rating as they look. And it's definitely on their radar, as they look, change in management, they want to make sure the same philosophies are taking place. So yes, it does have an impact. It does have an impact. Yeah.
Are there any additional questions?
Madam Chair, if I may, thank you for the report. I'm hoping that you can help me make sense of some of it. So it's a very detailed report, a lot of spreadsheets, a lot of numbers, but, and I'm sure that, you know, if I look at other reports, they have this disclaimer. So one of the, you know, right on page 3, one of the first one, it says, "Accordingly, we do not express an opinion on the effectiveness of the Town of Auburn, Massachusetts internal controls." It's page 3.
Yep.
But then, two paragraphs down, you do say that, you know, "Given these limitations, during our audit, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that we consider to be material weaknesses." And then similarly, through the memo, you provide other instances where, based on your tests, you did not find any weaknesses on various aspects in terms of the federal funding. You say, "In our opinion, the schedule of expenditures of federal awards is fairly stated in all material respects in relation to the basic financial statements as a whole." And it sort of tracks throughout, you know, sort of the same thing on the report of internal control over compliance. You say, you know, again, you can't find any material weakness. So I understand there's that disclaimer, but if I read this correctly, you know, in your professional opinion, we have fairly good controls in place, fairly good financial management in place, and at least on the, whatever level testing that you did, you did not identify any fatal flaws or anything that would raise concerns from your standpoint.
Correct. Yeah, so then, this is standard wording on an opinion, and it's kind of, I call it CYA for auditors. So we don't give an opinion on the effectiveness of your internal controls because they can be overridden at any given time. But as we go, we're, we identify a risk, and we're making sure controls are there, and we didn't identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. What those would be was, if we looked at your bank statements and you weren't reconciling your cash, and you had large unsupported reconciling items, it would be a material weakness or significant deficiency. Or if you weren't tying out your budget, as you get periodically reports from Karen about, compared to the budget, the year-deep budget reports, if that wasn't being tied out to anything, again, that'd be a significant deficiency. So no, we didn't identify any of those matters. Things, one of the items that, we gave a recommendation, there's a side letter you'll see, that we, and one of the areas we expressed interest the Town should review is the ambulance receivable. You had a high number of outstanding, I want to say, like, 2.6 jumps out at me, but that's one area that we had kind of recommended you look at, but again, that was another matter, not a significant deficiency or material weakness.
Thank you. Just another question, in terms of, and I might have gotten this wrong as you were speaking, but you said there was an important control the Town had in place, in your opinion, and if I got this wrong, please correct me, that the accountant position was separate from the treasurer-collector position, as sort of a checks and
Oh yeah, segregation of duties, yeah. You don't want a person who has control over the asset be accounting for the asset, and you, those are segregated, every community has that. Thank you.
Are there any additional questions? Thank you so much for the information.
Yeah, and you know, if you ever have concerns throughout the year, like, we feel, as a firm, we feel, in the audit, it's 365 days, there's just not two weeks we show up, and that's what we do. But if you have any kind of concerns at some transactions, or areas that you may, you know, can you gear towards this, you know, it might be a department, it might be a revenue stream, please don't hesitate to reach out. Kind of helps us kind of focus in a way the risk is on your financial statements.
Sure. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing for Fiesta Shows, Carnival, and Amusement Park. There's a small, there are two public hearings, there's a small edit. The first public hearing is for May 8th, and the second public hearing is for June 12th through the 15th. So we would need a motion to open the hearing.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chairs, yes, as well. Is somebody here from, hi, would you like to come up? Whatever you're more comfortable with? Excellent. And just tell us a little bit about
Good evening, members of the board. I'm John Flynn, Vice President of Dean &amp; Flynn, Doing Business as Fiesta Shows, Seabrook, New Hampshire. Here before you tonight to request another year of fun and food at the Carnival at Auburn Mall. Layout and everything that was approved by the Fire Department and Police Department last year for the two events would be exactly the same as it was last year. And naturally, upon this board's approval, we would then go ahead and finish with the Building Department, Electrical Department, Health Department, Police, Fire, and the State to come to do the inspections on the amusement devices.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions?
Actually, yeah, I just have one question to the Town Administration, just to jog my memory in the memory of other board members. Fiesta Shows was here last Um, Fiesta Shows was here last year twice. My understanding was that, uh, when you came for the second license, the police chief at the time indicated that the company worked very well with the police, everything was safe, everything was secure. There was no issues, uh, within the community, um, at that time. Can you just confirm that?
Through the chair, that is correct.
Thank you.
Um, are there any additional questions? Certainly.
More of a comment. So they're asking for two separate dates. Um, but the second date, should there be an issue with the first, is that revocable? Or I just want to make sure that we have, and I know Mr. Crane said there were no issues. But if there are issues and we choose to vote on the second date, um, is that, can we revoke that for safety concerns or?
Yes, you can.
Are there any additional questions?
A motion to close the hearing?
Just a correction, I believe as it's a public hearing, we do have to ask if there's anybody from the public that wants to speak.
Sorry, thank you. Um, are there any members of the public that would like to make a comment? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. Is there a motion on the application?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply to any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Oh, seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. That takes care of the May eighth and eleventh. Um, we would need to, a motion to open the hearing for the June twelfth through the fifteenth.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. This is just a repeat of the May plan, correct?
Yes, it is.
Do board members have any questions?
No questions. I'll just say that I'm happy that you are coming back to the community. I'm glad that, uh, you know, that these type of events benefited your company, but also I think are very important for bringing the community together.
Thank you.
Are there, do the members of the public have any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. Um, is there a motion on the application?
If, um, Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply to any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. Thank you so much. Have a good.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Have a good night.
Um, next we are moving along to department items. We have Department of Development and Inspection Services. I will let you go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Uh, I am pleased to, um, announce the townwide cleanup day. Um, as every year, um, we are doing it yearly now, uh, first Saturday in May. So, uh, May third will be the cleanup day. We'll hope for good, uh, weather like in years past. And, um, we have a, um, a flyer, um, around in-town buildings. We have it on the website. And, uh, this is a joint effort, um, with the Chamber of Commerce. Um, we're really proud of our partnership. And, um, over the past several years, uh, we have added a number of items that, excuse me, are free for the, uh, public to bring. Um, including, um, we have batteries, uh, mercury items, um, sneakers. The, um, Booster Club is collecting sneakers, uh, tires from Central Mass Mosquito Control, bottles and cans, uh, for the Boy Scouts. Um, paper shredding is going to be free, um, down at the Heritage Mall. Uh, scrap metal, this is always a real popular, um, item. People are able to bring scrap metal, get rid of, uh, for free. String lights, uh, we recycle all the lights. And, um, this actually is a really nice one, um, for mattresses. So, um, uh, residents from, uh, one household can bring a mattress for free. And, um, they just have to show proof of ID and, uh, it has to be in, uh, in good condition. Um, so it can't be something that was thrown outside. Uh, but as long as, um, we have those checks and balances, um, this is a really nice thing. Several years ago, DEP had a, um, uh, had an additional, um, mattresses and textiles uh, to be taken out of the waste stream. Um, so it costs pretty, it's, it's pretty expensive to get rid of a mattress. So we added this several years ago. Uh, so I just wanted to let you know if anybody's interested, um, to join us down at Fire Headquarters, Auburn Street. And, um, people get a bag of supplies. It's a great day, there's a box lunch at the end. Um, hope to, uh, to see everybody there. And if anybody is interested in volunteering, we have, um, a link on the website. Or they can scan the QR code.
Thank you so much. Do board members have any questions? Thank you so much.
Um, thank you.
For our second one, we have the Conservation Herbicide Application Notification Letter.
Sure. This is, um, uh, thank you so much. Uh, so in our department, we received, um, uh, we receive regular, um, notifications, um, from, uh, the utility companies, uh, such as CSX, National Grid, so forth. And they have, um, pesticide, um, and vegetation management plans that they follow each year to keep all the utilities, um, clear. Uh, so this is just a, uh, regular routine notification that we get. Um, these are also shared with the Conservation Commission as well.
Board members have any questions?
May I just have a quick question? Are anybody, any residences near where this spraying is occurring? And are they required to notify them?
Uh, I, I don't, I can't answer that. Um, I can get you information regarding that. Um, this is typically a, um, notification. Um, if there is any, uh, questions regarding it, we typically refer right to the, um, uh, to the company. Uh, but I'm happy to find out more information if you need it.
Yeah, I think it's important just so that residents may not be aware that something happening near them. And it may be nothing at all, there may be no residents near them. I just think we should know that so that we can at least put it on the website, let people know that, you know, keep their pets indoors, shut their windows, you know. People have a variety of health issues. These things are not necessarily the best thing for people to be exposed to. So if you could, I would appreciate it, yes.
Absolutely.
Find out where they are and if there's any sort of signs posted or anything like that so that alert the public who may be traveling nearby.
Sure. They, um, the, uh, the application for this is really to control, um, you know, the vegetation so it doesn't get overgrown so that the utilities can operate. But we can certainly find out, um, if there's any notification to the individual residents. I can report back on that.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I was gonna, um, I do believe that we have some walking paths that might, you know, intersect some of these areas. I'm not sure if it's legally we're supposed to be crossing them or not. But if there's herbicides sprayed, I think again, the notification when you're walking out there, if it's rubbing on you or, um, anything. And again, I don't know if there's alternatives to the herbicides. I, I know that they have crews out there maintaining the, the lines and stuff. I'm not sure how prevalent this is, but again, just notification and if they're on walking trails, some, some way to notify the residents before heading down those paths, just so they're not rubbing against it.
Thank you. I, um, I will definitely share these comments with the Conservation Commission as well because they, they do receive these notifications, um, so we can share that with them.
So I guess piggybacking off of both of those, which were good questions and that I was going to ask them. Glad I'm not the only one that's concerned about this. With all of that in mind, you know, the close residences, the close recreational facilities, are you aware of or do you know what kind of, uh, environmental monitoring that the state or even the town does of, once this is applied? Um, you know, is there monitoring afterwards to see, you know, is there any, you know, s- chemical side effects to abutting residences, to abutting waterways? Uh, you know, is there, is there any, is there any governmental agency, whether on the state or local level, looking at this and making sure that whatever pesticides they're using and as they're spraying and as they're applying it, it's not doing negative, you know, not having negative impacts to our environment as well as, you know, our, our, our health?
I can, uh, again, um, refer these comments to Conservation. Who receives these? And, and we will find out some information for you, even if we have to have a representative come from the company uh, to explain, um, what they're doing and answer your questions directly.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Um, next we are moving on to seven B, Auburn Fire Rescue Department.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You have before you, uh, notification, uh, from Governor Healy's office of, uh, acceptance of a Student Awareness of Fire Education Grant as well as, um, a Senior Safe Grant. Two separate grants, but totaling eight thousand eighty dollars and seventy-five cents. Uh, these are annual grants, uh, that we apply for and receive and, and have since the SAFE program uh, came into existence in the, in the early nineties. These funds are utilized to, uh, support education programs, both in the schools and for our seniors, uh, both at housing complexes as well as the senior center. Uh, so the vote tonight, uh, is, I am looking for the board to authorize acceptance of the grant in the total amount of eight thousand eighty dollars and seventy-five cents.
Board members have any questions?
Um, through the chair. Uh, Chief, can you just, uh, give a little more detail in terms of what types of, uh, programs this is going to fund?
Sure. Uh, so the, the Student Awareness for Fire Education, this supports the fire prevention activities that we do in the schools, um, at all grade levels, uh, from K to about the intermediate school is kind of where it, it taps out. But this, uh, puts firefighters in the school to talk about fire prevention, talk with the young kids about nine-one-one, what to do in emergencies. Uh, many of you have seen the fire district's, uh, mobile safe house that comes out. Those are the kind of programs that, that this supports. Um, and then Tess DiDonato, uh, our community paramedic, uh, she does a lot of work with the seniors, uh, with programs like fall prevention, medication, safety, those kind of things. So this is what, uh, those programs support.
And are those, uh, the senior programs, are those generally coordinated or run through the senior center?
Uh, some of them are. Uh, Tess does go to the senior center often, but she also works with all of the individual housing complexes. She works with Kateri Way, she works with the Woods and, and the Lodge at Eddie Pond. Uh, she has relationships with all of those executive directors. Um, so she does onsite visits to all of those complexes as well and runs programs specifically for those, uh, housing developments up to and including, what do you do when the fire alarm goes off, where are your evacuation points, all of those things.
Great. Thank you. Good stuff.
Do board members have any additional questions?
A motion that we, um, vote and accept, uh, vote to accept the, um, Student Awareness of Fire Education SAFE Program Grants and the Senior SAFE Program Grant.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, we are on number eight, we have no communications. We are on nine, Select or General Items. There are no proclamations or recognitions, there are no gift acceptances. Uh, we do have a vote, a board vote on a change of manager for the Century Sportsman's Club is the gentleman here. Wonderful.
Good evening. My name is James Hackett, I'm the current president of the Century Sportsman's Club. And, uh, we need to, we're just looking to change the manager, the bar manager for the look-alice.
Okay. Do board members have any questions? Uh, is there a motion?
Um, Madam Chair, I move that we, um, approve the license, uh, for the change of manager provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Um, we are moving along to nine D. Um, this is the draft of the forty B lever, letter, um, for, for us to send to Senator Moore and Representative Frost. Are there any, um, questions? Are there any changes that you would like to see? Okay, so we would just need a vote to send the letter.
Can I just ask one question, um, to my fellow board members and maybe administration? I believe that Senator Moore, Representative Frost, when they were here, they indicated that upon receiving the letter, they would be sending it or, or they'd be inquiring with other municipalities within their districts to see if this is something that others were also interested with. Does it make sense for us to CC, um, our counterparts, uh, being the chair of the board as well as the town manager in each of the, the, um, the other municipalities in both Representative Frost as well as Senator Moore's districts as well? So they're aware of what Auburn is concerned about and perhaps we can get some joint communication going with those other municipalities around forty B and other development pressures.
Through the chair, I can definitely CC the area towns within their jurisdiction.
Thank you.
That is a great idea. Thank you. Uh, you can make public comment at the second public comment as you, no, I'm not accepting public comment during our meeting. There is a time for second public comment.
I'm not going to, Madam Chair, I'm asking for coffee at eleven.
It will be available on the website.
Can, can I just ask that it, um, we have that new forty B section on our website where a lot of the stuff is part? Can we put that there?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Um, we are on nine E, a possible board vote and discussion of the DLS audit requested by Mr. Eric Richards. Do we want to vote?
We have to vote to send.
Oh, yeah, I'm so sorry.
Um, Madam Chair, I vote that we, uh, I make a motion that we vote to send the letter to our state Senator Moore and Representative Frost.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. Now we are on section nine E, um, a possible vote and discussion of the DLS audit request by Mr. Richards. Hi. In our packets, we have the two thousand nine audit that was completed, um, and a briefing that Mr. Richards provided. Do board members have any questions?
I have questions for the administration, um, not so much for Mr. Richards. For, I just want to thank you for bringing this forward. Uh, it's, it's a lot of good information. Um, so I guess my request, my question, uh, is twofold. One, um, the re, two thousand nine report, uh, makes reference of a nineteen ninety-nine, um, report that was also done. Um, their website has old reports on it, but it doesn't go back that far. Do we know, does the town, um, have that nineteen ninety-nine report or can we request it from DLS? Um, only because at the end it makes reference to that report that was done on a different level, um, in terms of policy versus management. Um, and it did reference recommendations that were made as part of that as well. So, um, personally I'd like to see that report as well if possible. And the second, um, question I have or request I have, um, if my fellow board members is, uh, agree with that, is that, um, Mr. Richards in his memo brought up the fact, um, that, uh, there hasn't really been a follow-up to this in terms of the administration. Um, I realize that we are, uh, sixteen years out at this point or approaching sixteen years out, uh, from this. Is it possible to get a report from the administration that just looks at the recommendations that were made in two thousand nine? And addresses those things that were put in place in response or those things that have not been addressed? Um, potentially why they were not addressed? I understand that, um, a significant amount of the senior management, uh, from two thousand nine is no longer here. Uh, even, uh, since. here, even since post 2009 are not here. But I'd like to understand what we did in response to this, as well as sort of what's outstanding. And then personally, and this is just from my take, I know that there is a possible vote tonight. I personally am not ready to vote on it until I sort of see that report and understand what we've done in response to the last two audits before we make a decision on requesting a third one. But that's just my own personal opinion. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
If I may, I don't know if Mr. Richards wants to express his concerns. You know, we have the summary, but I don't know if you just want to highlight the reasoning for the request and what you hope to achieve.
For sure. So as you know, my name is Eric Richards. I brought this forward. Everybody reads audit and they get all sorts of concern about financial mismanagement and somebody's being accused of stealing or any other type of thing. And certainly, that's not the intent here, actually. And as you know, in 2009, copy of the brief was sent to you and the report from the state. I'm sure you've all verified that on your own. Most of those recommendations, as you know from the last 60 or 90 days of meetings, most of them have been implemented in some form or other. The IT ticket system was mentioned by IT when he was here for budget. There are other things. There are some things that were left open or potentially about to be repeated as mistakes. But this is not necessarily, in my experience, government officials and executives and professional staff, they're not trucking cash out the door, right? And you do have your yearly audit that looks at the books this year in a limited scope. Think of this like an onion, right? So this, there's more to the sandwich or the onion or more depth available to you through DLS than just the financial side, which I think would be extremely helpful at this point in time because this board and others have expressed throughout their most recent sets of meetings, concerns or gaps in their understanding or availability of information, where certain assets or projects are laying. And those services, if you choose to ask as a board, they'll come in. And certainly since 2009, things have changed. Experience has grown. Technology's changed. Everything's different. So they can leverage some operational, some policy, some other areas that would help you. Two of the board members here tonight, they have a warrant item to put a moratorium on 40B. If you choose or encourage the state to come in and look across all your departments, their policies, their capital plans, your financial forecasting, those other things as you look at capital investments, infrastructure, or what other. It seems at the moment, to me at least, from the outside, in my ignorance, that you're bouncing from fire to fire, that each department here is waiting their turn, one by one, to get a fire station after 60 years, to get a library after God knows how long. This would provide you with a relevant base of up-to-date information, accurate, unbiased, uncurated, from an outside agency, with the latest recommendations from peer towns, from which you could build in the medium term, your medium and long-term strategic decision-making of how you're going to go about your capital improvements, how you're going to fund each town and give them a clear roadmap to where their needs are going to be met. So there's no more, well, it's my turn. And that's sort of my intent here, as opposed to the obvious 10% analysis of, oh, they're accusing us of stealing. We need to look at, well, we have audits. That's not what this is. And it also dovetails neatly and complements the citizen warrant article that I think you're going to discuss tonight that was up for town meeting. So this will create a depth of knowledge to work from, for if that warrant article takes place, to work from and decide where to focus or where not to repeat work and get charged, thus saving the town money on costs. Does that help answer your question?
Absolutely. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you so much. Do board members have any questions?
Echo the thanks. I think this is a good first step, and I think Mr. Richards is right on the money. I had, until you brought this forward, I had no knowledge of these type of audits. I spent the weekend looking at a couple of other community audits, seeing how they progressed over time from 2009 to, because my concern was I was seeing a lot of the same recommendations. And I'm like, is this like a check the box type of thing? And I found with different communities, it wasn't there. They actually were making real, spending a lot of time in these communities and coming up with individual, you know, recommendations that apply to those communities. So I was very happy to see that because, you know, it's, I am ready to vote on it tonight because I think it's important as we're moving towards getting a new manager. This could help the new manager hit the ground running. As Mr. Crane said, we do not have most of the department heads or even Ed Kazanovich, who obviously was a constant for 30 years. So we definitely need to start building that institutional knowledge now with the team that we have. So I would be in favor of voting to request it tonight.
So, Madam Chair, if I may. So I just want to explain, we all know that I love rabbit holes. So I was aware of this, but very lightly. I had never read one. So after getting ours, I read probably about 30 other community ones as well. That's how I know that our 1999 one was not on the website. And like Ms. Carpenter said, they are making different recommendations each type. And the reason why I would prefer holding this to our next meeting and getting that report from our administration on what we've done in response to this is because there are different types of audits that they can do. So there is managerial ones like the 2009 where they were concerned, or the select board at the time expressed that residents were concerned that money was being mismanaged. So that was the 2009 one. Apparently, based on what they had said, the 1999 one was a look at policies, at our financial policies, our management. I agree with Mr. Richards that the audit that we just heard from is a very sort of high-level financial statement only. It doesn't get into policies. It doesn't get into, you know, real, it doesn't really get into deep financial controls and management of controls like I think this does. But there's also, I believe, opportunities for other types of audits that they do as well that might look at programmatic programs as well. So my goal in waiting on this is that I don't think that we know what kind of audit we want to request. There's certainly no wording here that indicates the specific type or if we can do multiple, which personally, as Ms. Carpenter said, I think this is perfect timing as we have a new town manager coming onboard. This type of deep dive and my intent and desire would be to take DLS up on as many reviews as we can in order to, not because I think there's wrongdoing, not because I think that we don't have the controls in place, not because I think that, you know, that we lack the policies. But I think that it's the best gift, quite frankly, that the board can give the incoming town manager, who presumably will be, for the first time in a long time, from sort of outside of the regular management structure with respect to a long-term town manager and then the long-term assistant town manager who predated that town manager coming in as, who was long-term CFO. You know, the new person coming in will have an opportunity to take reports like this, not be beholden to what was done previously as the status quo that they were part of, that they had put in place, really be able to dive into this and start making structural changes, should DLS say that structural changes should be made. You know, so my reason for holding is not because I don't support it, it's because there's different layers and levels that they can do for us. And I want to be very specific in our vote where we ask for those levels and get an understanding, can they do all of them or are they really only going to do one or the other? So that's, you know, my reasoning. And also, I want to know, quite frankly, what have we done, you know, since we got this stuff?
The only thing we haven't done is the bi-weekly payroll, which is something I've already mentioned to the interim town manager.
Not necessarily, because another thing was the town manager signing the warrant instead of the select board. It was the combination of several positions as well. So there are other things in here that we've not done. Fully updating the website, I realize we're slowly updating it, but that website is still about 20 years, you know, old, in my opinion, compared to what other municipalities are doing. So I think there are things in here that we haven't done that we should be doing, quite frankly. But again, I want to know really all the different things we can ask DLS for and make sure that we are getting, you know, for lack of a better term, our money's worth as taxpayers to the state.
I expect you to, when I ask to hold something, I expect you to do the same.
I always do.
Yeah, never.
I am the first.
Through the chair.
Never.
So are we asking town administration to find that or is someone else going to take the types of audits, the limits of the audits and how to prioritize?
I think we're all able to look at the website ourselves and see what they offer and give our opinion. My thing really from the administration is to understand what they've done with respect to the 2009, to see if we can track down the 1999 and put in place as well, just to give us some understanding of what's been done. And then, you know, that's just for more informational purposes. So again, as board members, none of us were on the board back then. I don't know about Mr. Carpenter.
No, I was on the planning board.
A great board that was. You know, but we don't have all that information either. And we're, you know, and that's something that I think we should have as well. But then for us to actually come back in two weeks with a understanding of the different types we have, so all of us can do our homework, and then we can have a good discussion in two weeks where we say, this is the type of audit they did, this is what they identified in Dudley, Massachusetts, this is why I think we should be doing it here.
Chairman, may I ask Mr. Richards if he had intent on a specific audit? I know you mentioned several in explaining what you were looking for. Is there a specific one that you would like to see done or is it all of what you had mentioned?
I'm a glutton for punishment. I like, I like to get rotten tomatoes thrown at me and things, so all of them. And if they say you can only do this slice of the pie this year, come back next year or in three years, you roll through the entire suite. Couple additional points I think that should be made, just from a strategy or consideration point, if you'll allow me. One of the benefits and the curses that we have here in our community is that we have a deep bench of experience, right? There are people who've served for a long time, they're department heads with a lot of institutional knowledge. And when they go, they've served their time, they're ready to live a different chapter in their life or journey. A lot of institutional knowledge, a lot of idea of where assets or this happened at this time and was put aside to that time. Great example, Clint Camp Leeson, your financial audit, never flagged, ballooning project to $600,000 over six years with no real progress or $800,000. I'm not quite sure on the number. The DPW Commission was quite cagey at the finance meeting last week. So, and I'm not casting aspersions, I'm just making an example. These things fall. So Chief Coleman, with all his experience and it's great that, you know, his institutional knowledge, when he goes to fish on a beach in Florida, a lot of that is going to be left undocumented, unshared. And there's going to be a gap that you're going to experience as a board, as a community, where those things are unknown. And my hope is that as you roll through the suite of these audits, you'll have that basis of documented knowledge and you can institute policies for moving that along in a trackable manner, using modern technology or some other means besides a pen and paper, maybe, to keep a handle on that so that at any time, this board could say, oh gee, what do we do in 2021 in regards to X? And fill in that blank on their own research and then track back where the progress is.
That's great.
Make a motion, we hold this to the next meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. For that next meeting, can I ask the town manager to review this and let us know what has been changed so we have a better understanding of what changes have been made since this?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
I'll look on the Mass State Library site to see if, sometimes they do digitize documents. You can find some old stuff on there. So I'll take a look to see if we can find the 99 report.
Thank you so much. Thank you for bringing this to our attention, Mr. Richards.
Thank you.
We are moving along to the board vote. We have to recommend warrant articles. There's an update on the planning board recommendations and I think finance. Do we have the finance? How would we like to take these?
Madam Chair, through the chair. To worry, what are our options? We can make recommendations, we can vote to recommend it.
That is correct. You can, it's, there is actually a sheet that's been provided for you. And it says recommended approval, not recommended approval, defer to the petitioner or take no position.
Okay.
Yeah, so do we want, are there ones that we, are there any questions, outstanding questions on warrant article items?
So are we, since it is one of the warrant articles, are we, but it's later on with respect to, or discussion of vote on DPW amended facility budget, but that's tied to a warrant article? So shouldn't we get the explanation of that before we?
Sure. Would you like a motion to move up 10C?
Yes, so moved. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. So we're moving up town manager item C.
Thank you. I'd like to bring up the DPW Commissioner.
So we needed to amend our budget. In our discussions with Finance Committee, when we were going through the facilities section budget, the DPW budget got reorganized. So just trying to be more transparent, there was one line item that was added in the facility section to better clarify where that money was going to. The, one of our employees, he works in facilities but was getting paid out of highway, out of the highway budget. So when that was moved over into facilities, unbeknownst to me, the formula at the bottom of the row, it wasn't a summation formula, it was actually a, it was basically an equation equal to this cell, this cell, this cell. So when that row was added, it wasn't calculated into the total budget for the division. So subsequent to that, we went back, looked at the DPW budget, what we can do to try to rectify this. We looked at every line item. I was able to reduce a couple of line items that were quite tight. So to be able to continue with our facilities staff, we transferred the money, the, the town money towards the facilities division and looked at paying for some of our parks employees as well as recreation out of the PAPAS revolving account as well as the recreation revolving account. So there's several different changes, but just to get us to that $68,000, that's what we needed to get, we needed to do.
Do board members have any questions?
It's a general question, but it sounds like Anne has a question.
I have a question. On this, on this summary sheet that you provided, the next to last items references the DPU ridership, and we're using money from that account to offset road repairs. What's the DPU ridership?
I'm not really familiar with that account. I've never used it.
I can answer that question. So each municipality gets a certain percentage for each ride with TNCs or Uber, Lyft, that is, starts within your municipality. And that money is given to And that money is given to each municipality each year by the state, DPU oversees that. And the money is supposed to be sent on roadway repairs or other improvements to the general roadway, complete streets, et cetera.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Just a general one. So are, is there any other department that's paying salaries out of a revolving account?
I do believe there is a percentage of a couple of our salaries in the town that are paid very small amounts out of different accounts. For instance, the energy position, 15% of the person who does the energy is paid out of an energy account. You'll see it in different areas throughout the budget.
I know the energy manager, we, that's built into the program, so that's...
Exactly.
That's, I'm just a little concerned about using a revolving account to pay salaries. Those aren't necessarily stable sources of, so we should be working to not do that.
Through the chair, that was not the original intent, and I know that we do have built up money in those accounts and hoping to get that back in the budget.
Thank you. So I just have a couple of questions. In terms of how it happened with the Excel spreadsheet, going forward, is our town administration putting in sort of controls on the Excel spreadsheets to make sure this doesn't happen? And the reason why I ask this is, had, you know, Michael Marshall, who's on the Finance Committee, not whipped out his calculator because something looked off to him that night, we'd be going in the town meeting with a deficit of $67,000, not even realizing it. Because it was simple, somebody added a line in an Excel spreadsheet and there were no controls in there, and the formula wasn't a summation of the entire column, it was a, you know, in sort of an old school equals, and then you click on all the different boxes. So I just, are we putting in the controls for next year to make sure this doesn't happen again?
Through the chair, that is a great question, and those systems were put in place probably within 10 minutes after hearing of this issue. There will be a master budget that no one outside the town manager and the chief financial officer will have access to. That way, each department head can input, they'll have their own sheet, they'll provide it to us, and we will work it into our spreadsheet. This can never happen again. It was embarrassing, and it was, it is concerning, we're using revolving funds, it'll be a one-time use because of this situation, but systems have already been put in place. This is one of several issues that I see through the budget process that will make it easier for department heads and administration and working with the board to be more transparent and provide more information. So I think you'll see those changes sooner rather than later.
The other question I have, and I share Mr. Carpenter's concerns that we're using revolving funds for salaries that are not normally done, such as the energy. What sort of the opportunity cost, if we're talking economics, that we're giving up by tapping these funds for a salary that is technically related, but really not what meant the fund is meant to fund? So in terms of the Pappas recreational complex, you know, what are the types of programs we're potentially giving up because we're tapping the $11,000 from that? The recreation revolving fund of 20, almost $27,000, we're tapping that for, you know, what's the kind of programming that those normally support, that they're not going to support now?
In the past, I know that the Pappas recreational complex, we have tapped those to purchase equipment, that it's not a regularly used account. And as far as the park, the, actually, we do have our seasonal employees that are regularly funded through the revolving accounts. But with respect to the recreation division, I, I don't, I don't think that there's, I mean, there's enough of a buffer that, you know, it wouldn't affect the community at this point. I don't think that the community, I don't see the community seeing any effects for this one-time use. Through the chair, if I can, we are lucky to have substantial balance in these two accounts. The residents will not see any reduction in programming, but that does not mean that this should be taken lightly, obviously. And I think we are grateful to be able to use these funds for that, because there is a relationship. But our residents will not see any impact in recreation programs or events at the Pappas Recreation Center.
And last, I just want to, you know, voice my concern that I'm glad we were able to tap that DPU ridership money that's gone unused, the 17,000, but we're already withdrawing money from the roadway account to offset the staffing in the treasurer collector's office. Now we're, you know, decreasing the line painting here. And I know that we're saying we're going to split the project over two fiscal years, but that still withdraws money from that line item to be, that can be used either in '25 or '26. So, you know, roads, and maybe it's because I'm a public works guy, but roads really are the fabric quality of life issue for every community. And I'm getting, I get concerned that, one, we're banking so much on the governor getting Chapter 90 passed to get that extra amount. There's still been no signal from the House leadership or the Senate leadership saying they're going to do that. And, two, we're withdrawing what we already have, knowing that, and there was a good discussion, for anyone that's interested in this at the Finance Committee, that a good discussion with the director about the quality of our roads, the timeline on the paving, the methodology that's being used, and the fact that we are slipping behind for a combination of reasons. One, inadequate funding towards it. Two, increases beyond your normal inflationary rates for materials and labor costs that we're seeing, not just related to COVID, but related to other economic drivers of that. And, you know, that's an important program that I understand we have to make these changes this year, but next year, I hope we're going to get back to really focusing on roads and sidewalks and prioritizing those items. Thank you.
So, yeah, I've been on this for a while. Like Mr. Crane said, the roads are a big concern, and we have been taking money or cutting it. And the director came up here and said they were already tight, and now we're shifting money around on already tight. I don't know if there's another way to come up with the 67,000, if it's from free cash or something to do that, but I don't want to sacrifice anything, any levels of service in this for this mistake. But the residents are paying for these services, and I do think we'll see that there will be a lack. It might not be specific, but if lines aren't painted this year, all right, it's not necessarily a huge quality of life issue, but it just adds to the years and years of falling behind. When you have a 20-year road plan, and now we're at 30-plus years, we're falling further and further behind. There's 120, you know, miles of road or whatever, I don't know the specifics. But if we're not funding it, and we keep taking things away, and we're funneling money away from this for a treasurer collector position, which, again, I wasn't in favor of, you know, we need to get back on track, and we need to fund these things, and we need the residents to see that stuff. So I don't know if there's another way to come up with that funding, but I'm not, I'm happy to see you trying to work it out, but at the same time, this is, I don't know, can we, can we look to have it come from free cash? And we're at 30%, according to Mr. Scanlon, so.
Through the chair, you can't use free cash for operating budget. So my initial thought when this came to me was to actually cut it from the budget and wait till fall town meeting and see if there was a residual in our investments and our estimated revenue because of this conversation, exactly what we have. We have multiple accounts that are now being hit because of an error in calculations, and I am as concerned as you are. I don't think this is something that we should continue to do, obviously. But I have spoken extensively with the director, and she has assured me that there will be little to no reduction in the actual amount of pavement work that will be done because the cost is minimal. She is following a process that was outlined. I think I had, I had, we had done some documentation on how roads are scored and when they should be replaced and items like that. And those are our top priority. I know it's my priority, and it's a priority of this board, and I do know it's hers as well. I don't, unless she can correct me if I'm wrong, but I did not think that this would have any impact on our, any of the roadway work that would be done. No, that was not, it doesn't impact the plan that we have.
Madam Chair, is it possible that we could take this money from the reserve fund now and just reduce what's in the reserve fund in the budget and just shift it here? And then if necessary, add some money to the reserve fund in the fall?
If I could bring up the chief financial officer. We did just have a meeting regarding the reserve fund on Friday morning, I believe. We were talking about some of the issues that we're discussing, that this board and also Finance Committee have been discussing regarding overtime costs that need to be transferred in, that the budget is over, and other costs that we're trying to cover to get to fiscal year end. And a couple of those were not budgeted. One, three retirements were not budgeted, and there was a conversation, the Finance Committee level, about how you should prepare for those. We can't force someone to tell us when they're going to retire, but I think there was probably a little bit more of a headway. We knew some of this was going to happen, and we should have budgeted it sooner. But in regards to the reserve account, can I have your thoughts in regards, Karen, in regards to taking the 67,000 from the reserve account?
Sure. So I think what you're asking is reducing the reserve fund for fiscal year '26, but I probably would not recommend it at this, yeah, at this point, because we also have all of those contracts that are still open. So I don't, I, I think that was calculated so that it could cover what we're expecting for potential salary increases. So I wouldn't recommend doing that at this point.
Even if we could, I mean, we're talking about the fiscal year starting July 1st, and then by October, or say, even say the beginning of November, we could, when we have our special town meeting, at that point, we could transfer money in, back into the reserve fund and cover what we took out.
Well, I guess what my, I guess I'm still, would caution against that. And what I do want to say about some of these accounts that are here, the recreation has a healthy balance, there's over several hundred thousand dollars in there. So the, and actually, when we looked back at the salary, this 26,000, when we recalculated the amount, it wasn't 26,000, it was closer to 20,000 that would come out of there. So that would be a small, a small charge to that revolving account. And the Pappas recreational is, I believe, where we put the rental, rental fees that are in there, and there's a decent balance in there as well. So we're not going to really, I mean, I understand if we could have used it for something else, but at this point, we're not really tapping these accounts for anything else. So, and then the DPU ridership, again, we were just holding on to the money to kind of build up the funds to get to a, to a larger balance in there. So I was hoping that we could come to a, you know, kind of an agreement, that this wouldn't have a big effect on these accounts, and that we could go forward with what was recommended.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, on that basis, that these accounts have healthy balances, and this is probably going to shock some people that I'm going to be the one asking this question, if we can tap it for these types of uses to offset in less-than-ideal economic times with respect to, you know, incorrect use of an Excel spreadsheet that puts us in the balance of 67,000, why can't we tap this? Why weren't we looking to tap these instead of going to a 2.5% top-of-the-line tax levy and going to the taxpayers? If we have healthy balances that could be used to offset that in this economic, questionable economic times, where we have some residents who are experiencing issues, paying taxes and making, you know, making it meet?
So before staff talks about that, because having sat here for 11 years, typically, this is what we do in the annual meeting, and we make adjustments in the fall, which is actually a special town meeting. So it, you know, it annoys me when we call it fall town meeting, because there is no fall town meeting, there's only an annual town meeting. So this is not unusual, and again, I don't want to see us using one-time revenues. And to your earlier point, Mr. Crane, what I would like to see us do is, if we have these healthy balances, what kind of programs can we do that we're not currently doing? So, you know, that's a question for another night, but, you know, I understand that there was a mistake on a balance sheet, and, you know, I'm not poo-pooing it, but, you know, this isn't really the appropriate, in my opinion, venue for us to be, it's already been talked about at Finance, the situation has been mitigated. I'm not happy with how it's mitigated, however, I think we need to move beyond this and just stop harping on what was an unintentional error. So.
I don't think anybody disagrees that it's unintentional, and nobody's calling for, you know, we all recognize that it's unintentional, but again, this is raising questions that, you know, within a week, we were able to close a $67,000 gap, tapping revolving funds and other things, whereas we're struggling to meet expenses in other areas. So I think these are questions that if we don't want to answer tonight, they should be answered by, by our staff. And, you know, we had the school department come before us, and they wanted, they, you know, they got their budget as close as they could to a 4%, but town management, I think, said, you know, 3.5 is the highest we can go. Well, is it really the highest we can go? And what was the school department giving up that maybe could have been offset by a recreation fund that school department was paying for with respect to fields that could have been diverted to a recreation fund like that? So, so I mean, it's those kind of questions, and I understand, I respect your point, that this might not be tonight the correct venue, but I think these are important questions that need to get answered.
I don't disagree, and I'm happy to talk about this ad nauseam at another time, but again, I just feel very strongly, we've addressed this, it's been addressed now at two board meetings, I don't think we need to harp on it. I have sat through many budgets in town meeting, including 2010, where we had 400 bucks left on the table. That was all we had left. So budgets are cyclical, income is cyclical, we have no control over federal, we have no control over state, we don't even know if the state's going to vote their budget on time, let alone the federal government, which never votes on a budget. So, or has not done so in so long, that nobody remembers how to do it clearly. But, you know, we've talked about this. There are a lot of unmet needs that I think we all would like to see being met, and I think the special town meeting, when we have more clarity on the budget, on what we're going to be getting, is when we, over the summer, when we're usually pretty quiet, not a heck of a lot going on, we can certainly tackle these things.
So it calls for a vote on our, where it sits in the manager item. Do we want to vote it here, the amended, or do we want to vote it, we're still voting to recommend approval, not recommend approval, or defer to petitioner? Do we want to vote it now, or do we want to wait until we get it in the warrant item and we can supplement it to say amended?
My understanding is we vote on the budget as a whole, we don't have line item control of votes, so I don't think that we, I understand it says vote here, but I don't think it's appropriate for us to vote on a line item like this. I think we take a vote of the overall budget.
Okay. Okay, so then we, are there any additional comments on this item? Okay, so then we are going to move back up. Okay, so then we are going to move back up to 9F for the board vote on the warrant articles, and go through them one by one.
Make a motion that we defer to the petitioner for Articles 1 and 2.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. We are on Article 3.
Ma'am Chair, I have a question about that. On the updated revenue source cover sheet that comes with the budget, we're going into town meeting with a deficit of $192.20. Aren't we supposed to have a balanced budget that we present to town meeting? That's this one right. That's this one right here. It's right here.
If I could, through the chair, that actually is a little bit extra revenue, $192 over expenses, that is not a deficit.
So we're not, okay. Thank you.
Is there any other questions on Article 3?
Ma'am Chair, make a motion that we recommend Article 3.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well.
I would make a motion that we recommend Articles 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11.
So can I ask that we pull seven out of that?
Fine.
Thank you.
Second.
Vote to recommend?
Yes, please.
So there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. So we are moving back to Article 7. Are there any questions on Article 7?
It's not a question, it's just a statement on a personal opinion, and I know I've raised this previously when I was a town meeting member, in that I don't believe that as a town government, we should be seizing somebody's property and selling it, even for tax foreclosure. I think it's far more responsible to put a lien against their property, so when it is sold, we can get our tax money at that point. But the thought of seizing property for taxes due and removing somebody, even if we haven't done it, the fact that we're reserving the authority to do it is disconcerting to me.
Are there any other questions? Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we recommend.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The chair is yes as well. It is a vote to recommend. We are now on Article 12.
Chair, I'd make a motion that we recommend Articles 12 and 13.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. We are on Article 14.
Ma'am Chair, may I just ask a question of Chief Pullman? We will be getting, there will be literature at the town meeting, I assume, describing the kind of debt that we're looking at taking on and the impact on the taxpayers?
That is correct, and there will also be a short presentation from the architects in our OPM.
Okay, thank you.
Great. So on Article 14, are there any questions?
Make a motion that we recommend Articles 14, 15, 16, and 17.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. So we are on Article 18. These are amendments to the zoning bylaws. Are there any questions?
Make a motion that we defer to the petitioner. Second for discussion.
Don't we usually make recommendations on these articles?
Yeah, one of them can be defer to the petitioner.
Yeah, but we usually, I mean, we already recommend, we already voted on these articles at our regular meeting, I think last month.
Well, we, we sent this to the planning board for them to have their required hearing, and then they make a recommendation, but we're not required to agree with their recommendation or make a positive or negative recommendation. I seconded it for conversation.
Sure, I will know.
Just a question through the chair to Mr. Chambers, can you explain why, what your reasoning is behind wanting to defer?
So again, I defer because I know they put a lot more effort into it, so I'd rather than be able to answer it. I don't have all the answers. I know, I should say, I assume a lot of this has to do with getting our bylaws in alignment with the state requirements, but again, not being privy to all their meetings, I'd rather.
So the planning board did provide us letters in our packets that they voted 5 to 0 to approve Article 18, 5 to 0 to approve Article 19, 5 to 0 to approve Article 20, and the same for Article 21. So they have voted to recommend these?
I, I think, you know, based off of, again, you know, we've had our professional staff come up, explain these to us. They are to fall in line with state law. We've had the planning board send a recommendation, 5 to 0 unanimous to support. We've had the zoning bylaw committee support this, and I think it's important that, you know, as the highest elected board, when it comes to zoning, which is a hot-button issue in the town, that, that town meeting, as well as the, the town residents know where we stand on this stuff. So I'm comfortable listening to our professional staff, as well as the other boards. So I'd make a motion that we recommend Articles 18, 19, and 20, and 21.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The articles have passed for recommendation. So we are now on Article 22. Are there any questions on Article 22?
So I have one question. I know that it is mandatory in Mass General Law that the towns license dogs or provide dog licenses, as well as, you know, certain circumstances that govern that. Although I don't believe, and someone correct me if I'm wrong, in Mass General Law, it doesn't require that we charge a fee for this, nor does it require that we charge a late fee for this. Is that correct?
That actually, that is correct. I've looked into this. It also, however, says you are, you can charge a fee to cover overhead costs if you choose. Since the fee schedule is something we already voted on for last year, and I don't know that this is asked, is questioning whether or not we should be charging a fee in the future. I feel like that can certainly come before us, when fees come before us again.
I understand. I just wanted to get that clarified. And two of the reasons why I'm voting, why I'm personally going to vote against recommending this, is one, on the larger idea of the fees, municipalities tend to charge fees to residents when they are using a service or a special service. We get recycle bins, we use trash, we choose not to do it privately, we pay that fee. I am all in favor, we go to a recreation program, we use that fee. I am all in favor of user fees, taking that funding away from, you know, out of the taxpayer and giving it to the user fees. But that is a service where you are getting something, so you are paying for it. The residents get absolutely nothing from having, being forced to register their dog with the town. It's done for public health reasons, it's done for, you know, animal control reasons, but the resident themselves are not getting anything from doing that. So I have a hard time supporting that fee in general. But more to the point of this, you know, this motion, this issue coming before us, there's a tendency in government, and as somebody who works in public sector for 20 years and made my career in municipal government, I am sometimes guilty of this as well, but there is a, a tendency in government that you set a requirement, and then the minute they don't comply, you slap a, a late fee on them, or you slap a punishment on them. And I see nothing wrong with a 30-day grace period for residents, that if they do not get their fee in by March 31st, they still are liable for that fee, but we're essentially giving them a 30-day grace period before we slap a, a late fee on them, you know, by April 30th. And I personally think that is something that creates a more friendly local government, quite frankly. And I find it hard to believe that it is that difficult to explain to a resident that your license expired on March 31st, however, we are not going to assess a late fee until April 30th. As somebody who has run programs with thousands of permit holders, 30,000, 40,000 permit holders, I never found it hard to explain to somebody the difference between a due date and a late fee date. So quite honestly, I think that it's a good thing that the town of Auburn gives a 30-day grace period on a fee that they have to pay, that they get nothing back from, in return for. So I'm, I'm not in favor of eliminating essentially that grace period.
I make a motion that we don't recommend.
Second.
So I would just like to make a comment, because I have a dog who was a little bit of an escape artist, and I have to say, every time I called Animal Control to help me find my dog, they were more than happy to come out and search the area. So the notion that you are not getting a service as a dog owner from Animal Control when you pay that license, I think is a little bit incorrect. They are providing a service that, as a dog owner, I am only paying them for. So however, there was a motion and a second to defer to petitioner?
No, to not recommend.
And I just want to say, I'm not going along with Mr. Corrine 100%, but absolutely, I believe in a grace period, because every business gives all of us grace periods. And we're not usually slapped with 10, 14, 8% interest the day of. So I, I agree that, like friendly Fenway, we want to be friendly. But my opposition is, this is something that is a benefit to the resident. I don't see, I have not heard any compelling reason to deny it. So that's why I'm making the motion to say we are not in favor of taking this benefit from the residents.
Can I ask, I know Ginger is here, would, by changing this language, would it remove this grace period? Or is the real intent to, when your dog license expires on April 1st, to request that you renew your license? Is, is the intent to remove the grace period that we're inadvertently giving?
The intent of it is to have one date, that your, the dog license expires on this date, late fees are issued the next day. We have had numerous people come in with a check already written out after their license has expired with late fees on it. I can't accept that check. They didn't bring another check, their husband wrote it out. They've got four dogs. There's an extra $40 on that check. They now have to come back. So it's an inconvenience to them to have to come back and do it, and make sure they do it within that time, because if not, now they owe a late fee. So it's, we have it in documentation, we've got it online, but there's, not everybody reads a piece of paper. So we can put it out there, it's on the application. It's just, they don't read everything. We're just trying to make it a little bit more easier and a little bit more streamlined.
Thank you. So I have a second question. Would it be easier, because it, it is the day your dog license starts and expires is no longer mandated by the state, would it be easier to just change the date license expires?
So we're already giving three months, so a lot of towns don't even give people the ability to get a license for three months. A lot of towns only give you a one-month period to get your license. We're giving people three months. So I don't see if we move the licenses to expire the end of April, you're still not giving them the grace period. So I don't see where the difference would be, is if we cut it back or we move the, the date forward. I don't.
That's fair. I just, if we changed when we licensed to match when the bylaw was, then we don't really need to make a decision on, on a change.
The only thing is, is the bylaw states that the license ends, so either way, we would have to be changing the bylaw.
Okay, so there was a motion and a second on a not to recommend for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is opposed as well. Is there another motion?
I make a motion that we defer to petitioner.
Is there a second? Seeing none, is there another motion?
Make a motion, we take no position at this time.
Is there a second?
I think by default, if we can't agree, then we will be taking no position, so I will second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is opposed. All right, so we are moving on to number 24, 23, sorry. There is a small change in the dollar value of 23?
Yes, if I can, through the chair. There was a question when we first discussed the funding for the Regional Housing Coordinator through CMRPC, and we discussed a credit because there was a vacancy. Because of that vacancy, the amount requested for next year has gone down to $6,618 versus the $18,000 that was originally requested.
Motion to recommend.
Is there, all those in favor?
Can I just ask one question?
Certainly, yes.
Relative to that, and maybe this is something that Mr. Carpenter will say, let's ask over the summer, but if we weren't getting the services because they didn't have anybody, why were they billing us and why were we paying for it?
Thank you for the question. So CMRPC administers this program, so they give us a invoice at the beginning of the year, so it's paid in one whole, one whole invoice. So because we've had a vacancy since January, the person exited in December, so since January, we've haven't had these services. So CMRPC was willing to work with us to, they very well could give us money back, but we asked, can we put the money towards the amount that we've already paid towards the next fiscal year? And they were open to that.
So they bill us on a, beginning of the fiscal year, they send us a, an invoice, it sounds like?
One invoice.
They pay for those 12 months?
Yes.
Thank you.
Another question, do we have a contract with them?
Yes.
All right, so is there a, there was a motion on Article 23 to recommend, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are on Article 24.
I make, ma'am, I make, ma'am chair, I make a motion to recommend Article 24.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. Article 25.
She's with this one. I will make a motion to recommend.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. We are on Article number 12.
We are on Article number 26.
Make a motion that we recommend Articles 26 and 27.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. We are on Article 28.
Make a motion, we defer to the petitioner.
On Article 28, there is a motion and a second to defer to petitioner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. We are on Article 29.
Make a motion to recommend.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The chair is yes as well. The motion passes to recommend. We are on Article 30.
Motion that we recommend Articles 30 through 32.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. We are on Article 33.
Make a motion that we defer to the petitioner.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
The chair is a no as well. The recommendation passes. We are on Article 34.
Motion that we defer to the petitioner.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. We are on Article 35.
I know when Mr. Tetrall was here, we had recommended, or I had recommended, that based on some feedback from Mr. Corrine, that they sit down and perhaps we could work with the resident to amend the article on town meeting floors. My understanding, that has not happened. So I would make a motion that we defer to the petitioner.
Second.
And just, can you be clear about your reason? Is there, are there discrepancies or incorrect wording in the article?
So there are pieces of the article that differ from industry standards with respect to, just some examples off the top of my head, citing a three-year crash review instead of a five-year crash review. The fact that the distance selected by the petitioner would actually not cover the nearest intersection of concern in one of the cases, that sort of prompted this. As well as, in response to that issue, there's no language in there giving staff the ability to enlarge the area. They would have to go to a board to get that permission, and I think it's more appropriate for that. There's the citing of the weather related to the Boston geographical basin. Auburn is actually not in that basin. The city of Waltham, where I think the language was mostly taken from is, but the appropriate citation would have been the Worcester Basin. And there's several other instances along that lines that really should have been corrected. I believe the comment by the petitioner at the time was that those issues can be done on town meeting floor, or they can be amended at a later time, at a later town meeting.
Thank you.
Yep.
So there was a recommendation to defer to the petitioner. Is there, was there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. We are on number 36.
Make a motion that we...
Can I ask a question about this one? For somebody who knows the bylaw, the existing bylaw, does the bylaw require the videoing of any town boards and commissions, decision-making towns' boards and commissions already? And essentially, what we are doing is adding the, extending this to what has been said by the petitioner, really is the Auburn Water District.
Through the chair, it is my understanding that it is left up to the board, each individual board, to decide if they were going to have remote participation and a link for residents. This particular petition seems to be geared towards the Auburn Water District, but it may have impacts on our departments as well.
Can I just, not to contradict you, contradict you, I agree that it's, the policy is to leave up to the boards for remote participation, but I believe this is just the televised recording. And the question is, does the current bylaw include televised recording of all decision-making boards, such as ourselves, finance, ZBA, planning, Library Board of Trustees, that we know already does it?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. So my concern with this, and based on the language used by the petitioner, is that they are expanding this to the Auburn Water District, which is an independent government agency per state law, as well as the CMRs, as well as, I believe actually in one of the reports we have here from the auditor, it cites the same exact thing. In addition, we have other water districts that are not named in the language of the petition, specifically the Elm Hill Water District, which I belong to, which would have also had fallen under this, but again, is also an independent board that is not subject to the decisions of the Town of Auburn Town Meeting, our bylaws, et cetera. So I think there are some fatal issues with the wording of this. So for that, I'm going to make a motion that we not recommend approval.
Is there a second?
I'll make a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. We are on Article 37.
It's my understanding on this article that this individual has gone before boards and commissions. Is Darlene still here? Could she just talk to this?
It's Article 37, a vote to authorize the private cemetery.
Of a new cemetery, yes. Has it come before? It looks like it was pending approval from the Board of Health.
So yes, thank you for the question. This is a petition from the, basically from the owner of the property. They are proposing a cemetery on this plot of land. And they have gone through several boards, Planning Board, Zoning Board, Conservation. I believe they have, they're working through a, some DPW permit requirements. They may be in process, but that's happening right now. And they have gone before the Board of Health, they're working through right now the review process. So it does require Board of Health approval, and it does require town meeting approval. Because those, because of the timing, the Board of Health has to do their complete review. Town meeting is going to be right up at the same time. So we will continue forward with our process. And I know that the property owner wanted to put it before town meeting, really so that they didn't have to wait until the fall. But they are working through the process.
And through the chair, to Town Administration, does the Board of Health need to act before this bylaw can be heard by town meeting?
Does the Board of Health need to act before this can become before town meeting? Correct?
Correct.
In the initial discussions with the property owner, it was understood that it needed to be approved by the Board of Health before the residents could vote at town meeting.
Okay. So I'm going to make a motion that we take no position at this time to give the Board of Health an opportunity to finish this process. And if they have enacted positively, then we could obviously make a vote alternatively. So that's my motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. We are on number, Article 38.
Considering that we have our moratorium language that we previously recommended, and given the fact that our town attorney, some of the questions that he answered was whether, I think it was Article 6 and Article 7 of the Massachusetts State Constitution come into play with the moratorium, which was one of two main arguments of, by the petitioner for putting this forward, combined with the fact that the report provided, which was the second basis of the petitioner's reasoning, specifically cites 40B as a model for what should be done to address these issues. I'm going to recommend that we not recommend approval, or make a motion that we not recommend approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. We are on number 39. This is the vote to explore forming, oh, sorry, to shifting town tax base from property to income. Are there any questions?
Make a motion, we defer to the petitioner.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. We are on number 40, vote to explore forming a public-owned community development financial institution.
Make a motion, we defer to the petitioner.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. We are on our final warrant article item, a vote to mandate a comprehensive independent audit of the towns. Are there any questions on this item?
Did we discuss or find out what an audit would cost?
I was going to ask that question. The language put forward by the petitioner includes the cost as empty and highlighted. I know that this was raised by the Finance Committee that, you know, inquired on the cost as well, so I didn't know if that was brought forward yet.
So the citizens, the person, Mr. Largess, who submitted the citizens position, do you, were you able to find a cost?
I'm sorry, I was, well, in that packet that I gave you, there is no 100% way to come up with a cost, because it is all on who you choose. So Mr. Richards is up here talking about the other audit through the state. This audit would take over after the other audit. So there wouldn't be extra cost that both audits would be doing the same exact thing. They wouldn't overlap. So it's, let me look at this. You're going to get your brakes done at a dealership, okay? Everybody's going to have a different price. Then they say, oh, well, hey, you know what? Now you need a rotor. Now you need a caliper. So if there's nothing found, they're not going to, the extent of cost of the audit is going to be on the lower side. I believe if it was written correct, $300,000, and that was according to, I believe it was Dudley. So it all depends on who the town chooses in the in-depth of the order. So if Mr. Richards's state audit is done first, this audit will pick up after they're done to cut costs. So I'd recommend that both audits be done, but obviously, the state audit, I would say, would have to go first.
I have a question through Town Administration. My understanding, we need a dollar amount. We can't put out a bid without revenue or a dedicated amount of money for this. So...
Through the chair, you're correct. And we did speak to Mr. Largess on Friday, and we added a dollar amount of $300,000 to this warrant article.
Okay. So I guess my question is, is this is a vote by town meeting mandating that the town expend $300,000 approximately to go through an intensive forensic audit? How is a town, have we accounted for $300,000 in our budget that would, that would be dedicated towards this? And going back to, I forget which of my fellow board members brought this up, we're required on the Mass General Law to present a balanced budget at town meeting. So I don't see how we add $300,000 of expenses without showing the revenue source to offset those expenses.
There's always, there's always free cash, Mr. Corrine.
Free cash is never free.
Well, I understand that, but, you know, we moved from $6 million to $8 million for the fire station. I'm talking $300,000. And, you know, hopefully...
The fire station had a documented budget, documented goals, documented plans, documented. Perhaps what I think would be a more responsible approach, and I'll leave it to my fellow board members and obviously town meeting, would be to look at the DLS audit, to go through that process. We have our regular financial audit, to go through the intense DLS audit. And then, based on the results of that, if there is actually a need and a requirement for a more forensic study audit, we can bring it back to town meeting at that point with both a cost as well as a revenue source to pay for that cost, whether it be free cash, a revolving fund, that apparently we have large amounts of money sitting in, et cetera. But I think that it's more logical to go down that route than to put this before town meeting, say allocate $300,000 with no financial, you know, with no revenues attached to it, and we're not even sure that we need everything that's in, that we're telling town meeting to vote that they want to see.
And the other problem is, there, so the problem with your explanation, and again, this isn't a debate, as the chair mentioned earlier, so I'm going to keep it with the board. There are dates that we have to meet, that this audit has to go out. So we can't say to DLS, yes, and then this will run smack up against it. And personally, I just, I don't, I just don't agree with doing this at this time. I just feel like we should be doing the DLS audit, see where we are. We have had multiple wonderful audits, and as someone who, you know, spends a little time playing around in that pond, I do know that the audit is not, you know, a clean bill of health. He told you tonight, he looked at 80 invoices. That doesn't mean that there isn't, he's just saying his sampling was 80 to 100. But based on a statistical analysis, he's come to his conclusion, so.
I also think, Mr. Carpenter, this would show major transparency to the town residents.
I have gotten zero calls in 11 years about concerns. I've had concerns about the overall budget, the rise in the budget number itself, and I share that concern. However, we also have a Finance Committee, we also have department heads who go before them and explain to all of us why they need what they need. Now, we can all disagree with that, or think, well, you could wait a year, or you could wait two years. I'm just going to say, I don't think this is the appropriate way of doing this at this time. I'm not saying never, but I prefer the DLS audit. First of all, it's free. Second of all, I don't like just throwing out numbers, $300,000, because, again, if you appropriate $300,000, we don't know that that's the price. And then we got tying up resources that we don't have currently, that we can be using for other things that we all want. So I'm not in favor of just shooting at the moon and saying, let's put $300,000, which we don't even know if we have. We won't have free cash until September, which according to this document, we would already have to be in the middle of an audit. So we have to come up with $300,000 from somewhere. It just doesn't make sense. It's not something that we should... It, it's not something that we should do. We should approach it in a reasonable way, which is a DLS audit. And I'm not saying never do it, I'm just saying, this isn't the time to do it. There are other avenues where we can get better information at zero cost to the taxpayer, which I think is the best route to go. These are seasoned people, they do these audits multiple times, those are the people that you want looking at it, so.
My concern, Mr. Carpenter, was we haven't done one. We've changed town managers four times since I've been a town meeting member, and I don't think I've ever remember.
Only had two town managers. Charlie was acting. He was never officially the town manager, he was acting town manager. And he never got a review, which is why we all get tortured every year to do a review of the town manager, because those boards didn't do it. So we've changed our processes. We've only had two managers. We haven't had four. So we definitely have had executive secretaries, town administrators, we definitely have had that. I agree with you.
Yeah, I, I've talked to somebody in Shrewsbury and they say they do one at every change of a town meeting, uh, town manager. My apologies, eh? And when I talked to Senator Moore, he said Milbury does the same thing.
Thank you for that. Are there any additional, I, we reached out to both Shrewsbury and Milbury, and my understanding is that they do not do a complete forensic audit when they change town managers. Are there any other questions for the petitioner from the board? Is there a motion?
I would make a motion that we do not recommend this article.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. That concludes our warrant articles.
Madam Chair, before we leave that, just because Article 36, we, we raised some legal questions, can I just ask a question through you to town administration? Article 36 is on the filming.
Yep.
Is town council going to have an opinion that he can give on town meeting floor? Because I think we can all say, we think, we kinda, we know, but I believe town meeting deserves an answer from someone who is qualified to actually make a legal opinion. So is he prepared to make an opinion to town meeting members known as to whether that's an appropriate article?
Through the chair, he'll be available for any warrant article and to opine on any of them and provide guidance.
But I would request that he prepare specifically for Article 36.
No problem.
And that he be at the front of the room as opposed to sitting in the back.
I concur with that, given past town meetings and the need for legal opinions.
Thank you. I apologize for.
Are there any other questions or comments for warrant articles? Okay, so we are moving to 10A, the town manager items, and I will hand that over to you.
Thank you. Through the chair, over the last six months, I've had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Charles Slatkin, who I'd like to bring in front of the board at a future meeting. He is the owner of the Robert Nestert Goddard House in Worcester on Talawanda Ave. He is also the executive director of the Wonder Mission and Robert, the Robert Goddard Project. We met with him a couple weeks ago, and if he's not anything else, he's truly inspirational. He has given us a lot of information about Robert Goddard and Esther Goddard and is looking to see what we're going to do next year at this time. So we are forming committee and I am respectfully requesting the board vote on a board member that can be part of this committee that will help us on a two-day event in March of 2026. It'll be a Friday and a Saturday where we have events throughout those two days, hopefully, with working with the Chamber of Commerce, working with multiple department heads, a couple of residents, and hopefully a board member and anyone else who actually would like to participate in working with us to make sure that we have the best possible festivities for those two events. So if, if one of the board members would like to volunteer or if we could vote to have one, that would be wonderful.
Madam Chair, if I may, first, I'm not volunteering. But I just, two things. One, can we just make sure that the dates of our events are not, are not in conflict with the dates of Worcester's events, who's also doing this? And number two, can we make sure that our events far outpace and are much bigger than the city of Worcester's events? The city of Worcester is attempting to steal the thunder of the fact that the launch took place in the town of Auburn, not in the city of Worcester. So although he lived there, he did what made him famous in our town, not in their city. And I just want to make sure that, that, that we give proper due respect to, to our history and within our community.
In fairness, he did all of his work in Worcester, he just snuck over the border to scare the hell out of his own cows. So in fairness to them, they do have some claim to him, but.
Through the chair, does Mr. Crane have a budget recommendation?
Apparently, the Recreation Revolving Fund has a very healthy balance.
We're not using all of that.
And if we are doing anything at Pappas, apparently they also have a healthy balance, so.
So usually the first one to speak up is the volunteer, so thank you.
No, I would, I would be honored to do this. I would love doing, participating in this, yes.
I would make a motion that we appoint or recommend Ms. Cavadot to represent the board on the Goddard Centennial Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well.
For the record, my uncle used to be his paper boy.
Oh, cool.
Up in that area, yeah. That's cool.
All right, so we are now on 10B.
Wonderful. So if I could have Joanna come up, we have been meeting regarding the Goddard Park improvements. They should be actually starting back up this week. They were shut down for the winter, they're well on their way. Unfortunately, there were a couple of things that were found regarding the missile that is in Goddard Park, and I'd like Joanna to explain what was found a little bit more.
So as everybody is aware, we are trying to revitalize the area, and as part of that, we're looking to get the fountain going, so having the, the fountain, the LED lights, all those upgrades. And the original plan was to paint the missile. It's not a monument, it was an actual missile that was brought over from DC. So it is, it's standing, it's just might not be the, in the best of shape. The original plan was to, to paint it, but over the winter, in our, in our strike visits, one of the engineers came back, actually a couple of weeks ago, sent me a picture, there's another crack forming. So it's, it's in disrepair, we knew that. It's just trying to, trying to repair a missile is, is not really within our expertise or I'm not really sure if there was, you know, there was the intent to, to, you know, to repair the shell of a missile.
Through the chair, just to, just to follow up on that, you know, I've been looking at this for the, well, for a long, long time, but over the, over the last year since we've been doing the Goddard Park improvements, the missile, as Joanna said, it does have a large crack in it, there are several areas where it is rotting, you know, it's essentially rotting from the outside. And in our conversations with the folks from the Goddard House, we were actually talking about the missile and the repair. And they're, they're not actually a huge fan of the missile because it's not really a true representation of what Dr. Robert Goddard invented. You know, it was something that was brought here from Washington 50 years ago, it stood there for the past 50 years. But in conversation with the Goddard House, they would like to see us potentially move in a, in a different direction and use the actual silhouette that is adopted by the Goddard House and the Mission Foundation. We, we did have some, some early estimates on that. So, you know, our recommendation is that we sort of steer that money away from doing any kind of painting or, even if we paint it, we're not gonna stop it from rotting from the inside, we're not gonna stop it from continuing to crack. So, you know, in our opinion, this is the perfect opportunity to remove that as we're enhancing the park with other types of features in the park that will sort of demonstrate the history of Goddard. We think moving towards, you know, the actual branding of, of the Goddard House is, is probably a better way to go.
Do board members have any questions?
The only thing that I would say is, we just need to make sure that we have a plan, we have a budget, we, and it has to be reasonable. And we have to figure out how to get rid of a missile.
Yeah, I mean, one, I agree, I think we need a plan, we need a budget, we need to stick to it. But also, what's, what would be the timeline and the reason why is because I'm concerned that if it has a crack now, another crack is forming and it is rusting in an area one where we're gonna have people working to install the bridge, or we're gonna have heavy equipment moving, that's gonna only cause issues, safety issues related to it. And then we're opening up a park and having people walk around it, knowing that there's safety issues. You know, I think it's actually probably at this point, you know, this is just my own opinion, not a legal opinion, this might become quickly a liability issue for the town that we may have to address sooner rather than later, and I want to know if there's a plan for that.
So I don't disagree with you, Mr. Crane, you know, and I, I think as we work to get the fountain repaired, because that's still going to move forward, we believe that that rocket should come down before even the repairs happen on the fountain. So I want to work, you know, closely with the DPW and coming up with a plan on really how to get that down as soon as possible, really before the bulk of the work continues through the summer. So we agree.
Are there any other questions? Thank you so much. We are moving along to 10D.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So tonight, we're trying to gauge the, the opinion of the board in moving towards an electronic format for board meetings using iPads. The town clerk will be replacing all of their iPads as part of their upgrade to the townwide voting system, so that is going to free some iPads up, so there'll be no cost. And we're, again, we're trying to gauge the board of moving towards a more electronic format to kind of streamline things that are really in concert with a lot of other things that we're doing within the town behind the scenes. We'll be shortly moving to electronic pay stubs, we hope this summer we're gonna be electronic POs. We're trying to reduce the amount of paper, we're trying to become, you know, more efficient on technology. The way that this would work is the Board of Selectmen would have their own private drive within, within Google Drive that's password protected by all of your emails to access. Instead of the paper binder, Danielle would create one PDF document, so it's sort of a running PDF document, so you don't have to close out and go to individual documents. The head of each document would be labeled because we would run it through a program that allows the PDF to be edited. So even, you would have an option even on the iPad to either download the PDF or open it in the app, so you could actually edit the PDF while you're here and make notes on the PDF just as if you were on, on a pen and paper. One of the things that I, I think would be really beneficial, and we've seen it just over the last month, is it would eliminate the last minute switching out agendas, making new copies for packets, you know, right before the meeting starts, handing out new packets. The information that would be uploaded to the PDFs would be fluid, so really anytime you opened the documents, you'd be aware of any additions in information that came. There are several communities that are doing this already, we're certainly not reinventing the wheel. There are many boards that are using technology, whether it's iPads, laptops, even, even just something as simple as a screen that would allow you to see presentations better, you know, from your vantage point here. So we think that this is consistent with, with what we've been doing technology-wise, just trying to reduce the amount of paper, become more paperless, just advance the technology initiative. So we're just trying to gauge the board's interest tonight. This is something that we wouldn't have to jump into with both feet, we could, for a period of time, we could run both a binder and the iPad until we get used to it. Maybe after a month, you say, you know what, this isn't, this isn't really what we want to do when we go back, but we, we feel that this is a direction we'd at least like to explore.
Board members have questions or comments?
So I'm anti iPad, unless you want to give me the ability to print, because I'm gonna print everything that you give me. I spend all day, every day on a computer, I don't want to spend the amount of hours that I spend on this book on a computer. So to me, this is helpful, and we shouldn't be getting updates at the last minute. And that's something I do intend to bring forward, similar to what the land use boards do. If it isn't in, by the time the agenda's set, if you can't get it to us, we shouldn't even, nobody should be being given materials the night of a meeting and asked to make a decision. That just is not good. And it's also not gonna get you a meaningful conversation by having that. So whether the board decides to adopt that, that's something that I would like to do. So I, I think that we just need to make sure that people are aware that we have a deadline, it has to be in, and that's just, and if you don't, we don't hear you. You have to wait two weeks, you know?
So I just, I'm not opposed to it, I'll just say that I, I use technology in my job, I'm a proponent of it. However, I personally am a Luddite, so I too will be printing the entire thing because, as anyone knows, as they see me through and through, I have tons of notes on here that I read through the package the weekend, I make notes, I put in, you know, reminders, ask this question, and I'm not gonna be easily able to do that using an iPad. And I'd be interested in knowing what are, again, potential other uses for these iPads since they are being discontinued by the clerk's office, but I don't know how many there are, but have we looked at potentially giving a couple to the library to use for technology purposes or their lending library or, you know, is there some use for the school? It's certainly, you know, something that I wouldn't stop other board members from using if that's their benefit, but for me, I'd rather you give that, you know, iPad to a different user, because I'll be honest with you, it's gonna collect dust for me because I'm gonna, again, I can't scribble notes on an iPad, I think you guys would get pretty mad at me if I did. That's just my own personal opinion.
You can though, you can make notes on the iPad.
Not like this.
No, you really can though, because you just download the PDF.
I use them when I work, I hate it.
So I, I enjoy making my notes as well, but I'm willing to give it a try. My concern is if we don't have wireless access during a meeting, that really puts a damper on every, all the benefits. So I, I've never used the Wi-Fi in this room, I just want to make sure that technology is not the point of failure. So again, if, if we come into that and everyone else has a printed agenda and I'm sitting here with an iPad and I can't see it, really puts me at a disadvantage. But the other thing is, would we be taking this home? Is this, and, and then I just want to make sure, because again, I don't want things updated constantly and I want to be notified and have that, because I do spend time on the weekends I dedicate it to go through everything. If things are changing, and they shouldn't be, it definitely can change the thought process and what I've already right there.
Yeah, so all of the communities that we spoke to, whether it was a laptop or an iPad, they were all issued to the Board of Selectmen members and they were theirs to take home, bring to meetings.
And again, where, where I am, I'm not saying I'll have Wi-Fi in there, so I think access, it might not work for me, but I'm willing to try it.
Yeah, and the same, I'm willing to try it, although I prefer paper, but I do have other areas I make notes on too, so thank you.
I read all of the package information online already, so that it's not gonna bother me at all. I do like this paper though, because I do make a lot of notes on like, and especially when I'm like, to keep my place where we're at, so I am happy to try it as long as I still get a paper agenda.
And, and I think that there's a hybrid that we could look at, if everybody wants an agenda, if everybody wants, you know, certain things, but where I think it would be an advantage is its take like tonight between the entire warrant, you know, tonight was the audit, you know, there's a lot of.
We need a three inch, not a one.
Yeah, you know, that, that's the thing, right? This binder was kind of, so I, I think that there's potentially an opportunity.
This binder was kind of, so I think that there's potentially an opportunity where there's a hybrid for both, where you get some documents that are 50, 60 pages, that would be a lot easier just to look at on a drive versus, you know, printing those, those hard copies. So I think that really the sky's the limit. It, it's up to the board to kind of tweak how they want it, but we're just looking for some guidance.
Yeah, I, I have no problem. We voted for a hybrid before. I don't have a problem with hybrid, but I want everything printed for me. And you would, and. That's just, as long as I'm sitting here, I want paper. And I also don't want responsibility in case somebody breaks into my house and suddenly the iPad goes, and now suddenly somebody's saying, well, why didn't you secure it in the secret vault that I don't have at home? So that's another concern that I have.
Thames, he doesn't have it.
Is there a problem with people stealing the agenda? I don't think enough.
You don't, you know, you say that, but people can get into our system through that. So you don't want things just floating around unsecured.
You could lock it down, and everything that comes before the board is actually public.
I think she said, this side of Luddites, and we like our paper.
And Sarah, I'm an IT auditor, so I can tell you, you can do all those things, and they still get in. So let me tell you, don't trust it.
No. Okay, thank you. No.
I would make a motion that we explore a hybrid that it's an option for members to accept an iPad, but if members want printed copies, the binder is available to those members.
Sure.
Will my iPad be purple as well?
Case, perhaps, Ken? Or you could.
But what fund is that coming out of, Steve?
The recreation.
Exactly.
I don't know what.
Don't even joke about that. But it's coming out of the town managers' budget.
So moving along, so there was a motion.
I'm making a motion that we pursue a hybrid model for those members who would like to try the iPads, absolutely. But for members, it is an option for members to request that they get a binder.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Moving along to number 11, we have no table items. We had number 12, we have no new member items. I know, Mr. Large S, we are on public comment again, and you asked to hold your time for the second public comment? Are you, okay, great. You're welcome. Certainly, if you'd like to come up and make a public comment. Can you just give your name and your address?
My name is Eric Richards. I live in Ravine Drive in Auburn. It just, I know you have decision fatigue at the moment, and you're all excited to go home. Real quick, a passive observation, as a entrepreneur and business owner, I think if you look, or earlier, you had the conversation about manually entered spreadsheets, I would suggest you look heavily at how much time suck that is for all levels of employees. It's not 1986, it's not 1992. There's modern tools that are secure, that you can take pictures of receipts, that will take a lot of administrative time spent on manually doing formulas in an Excel sheet. Look, I, I know accountants use them regularly, you know, secretaries, they have their day-to-day thing that they like to do. It is a huge inefficiency and time suck, and I would encourage you to seriously explore how you could free up those humans to do better things that are more appropriate for their time, so that, and I'm sure this scales, right? Even at the top level, you have folks making $200,000 that are re-reviewing stuff employees did, and it's just, their time is better spent elsewhere, or at home.
Thanks so much for your comments.
Thank you. We have some meeting minutes in our packets. Absolutely. Certainly, can I just get, if you come up to the podium, can I get your name and your address?
So my name's Eric Alvinson. I'm the owner of Blackstone Development Group. We're based here in Auburn, and I have a property on 93 Rockland Road that I was told by the sewer department to receive our approvals for a cut and cap for a new construction build that I'm doing. I'm demolishing an existing house, that this was a Selectmen Board decision that was to be made, and that was a comment from the sewer department here in Auburn. Which I don't believe this is the form for those types of approvals, but I could be wrong. So I came tonight.
I don't know offhand, I'm so sorry, but yes, surely.
Well, I'd like to take your information and talk to you about that after the meeting.
Fantastic, will do.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you so much.
Can I just make a request that if it is, in fact, the, the situation that we do have to approve this, and it is upholding your, holding up your project, that we bring us to our next meeting?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. So finally, we do have meeting minutes in our packets. Are there any corrections or changes?
Can I ask that we hold them? I did not get a chance to read them.
Certainly. We will hold them for the next meeting. We would just need a motion to adjourn then.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. We are adjourned, thank you.